Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectmen Meeting for May 3rd, 2016. First item on the agenda, a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Seconded. All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded. All in favor? Department head, committee chair, updates. Any department head want to fill us in on anything? Scott?
Yeah, just want to let you guys know what I've done so far this spring. We've got all our coal patching done, one good round, and my sweep-in, I just got a little bit more on West Shore Drive. I like to do every driveway, every, pick everything up because it's close to the lake, so I usually save that one for last. And I have my signs, I've done my 911 going around, checking for every single sign privately or for the town, and I'm going to update on a lot of my corner signs and some more speed limit signs and some more reflective arrows, so they're coming. The people kind of messed up on us a little bit, but...
They actually, when I talk to them at the end of the day today, they will be delivered early next week.
That's true.
They didn't give you enough for what the state said we had to do?
No, they kind of lost our order.
No, it's a long story. The order just got...
And I've been recently talking with Dayton. He finally come up today, because if you remember, I told you I was going to pave West Shore Drive, and he come up today and measured it and he gave me a price, and I have just about seventy thousand and a total of seventy-three, so I'll just cover the rest of it out of my road maintenance budget to get that road paved, so. Except for the last little bit on the hill, which I've already paved a few years ago, the whole right to 109.
That's great.
So that'll be it. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Any other department heads? Nope? Okay. Old business, Jim Doer.
So, as you know, Ted has delivered today, so we're all set, we've got it there. The contractors hope to have it in by the end of the week.
MMA, oh, on the Jim Doer. Do the alarm company have to come too, or is that just a battery operated thing now?
No, they don't have to. For leaving it the way it is for now, they don't have to come out, because it's tied in through, it's hardwired through.
Okay.
So it's not going to affect the door, so.
MMA action plans?
I got an email from Dave Langley this morning saying that the railing at the rescue building has been fixed.
Yes.
As of May 2nd, and that the exit light has, needs to be ordered and should be there by the end of the week, so hopefully this will be the last time we have this, we will notify Lance that we're done.
Sounds great. Abandoned properties?
I still have the one lingering until May 17th. They haven't been able to deal with it out of court, so Springville District Court, 1:00 on May 17th. Code enforcement will be going with Lankowski, but certainly if the board, anybody from the board wants to go.
1:00?
1:00.
In Springville. Foreclosure properties?
And that one's kind of lingering, waiting for Ed. I don't know where we're at as far as getting response back.
I don't know, waiting on a response back from Southern Main Communications to see if that second one's a good tower site. And I also talked to Ben Gore last night, and he's going to look into it as well.
Okay.
So between the two of them, we'll take what they have to say.
So we'll still wait on that before we put the two properties up?
But yeah, the idea was, you know, we don't want to have to do the process twice. So we'll wait and see if you guys want to use that one for something, and if not, we'll advertise them both.
Yeah, if it's not going to work for the tower, I can't see saving it for anything else, right?
No, no.
Okay. Fire department paramedic interviews?
Yep, so per your instruction last week, I went ahead and scheduled them. I checked with the chief and the assistant chief. You'll be getting your packets, but the interviews are going to be held on Thursday, May 12th. So it'll be the three selectmen and the two members from the fire department. You have four interviews. We've scheduled a half-hour increment, so I'll give you a, I'll email you an actual schedule, but May 12th is the day of the interviews.
Okay, and can we see the resumes beforehand?
Yep, I have packets ready for you.
Oh, great.
In talking to Chief Langley last night, he'd like to bring in one outside chief to sit on that board as well. He'd like to bring in Chief Benati from Sanford. Due to the fact that there are three people that are from the department, from Acton Fire, that have put in for the job, it'd be nice to have an outside person to have on the interview process. What's your thoughts on that? And I'd be willing to give up my seat on the interview process.
Oh, you don't need to do that.
Well, I think if, you know, if you're bringing in another person, that would give you six. It's always better having an odd number, so.
Well, they're just going to give input, the three of us make the final decision, so.
Oh, yeah.
And he's been involved in the other interviews, correct?
Right. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just say bring him in, you don't need to step down.
Okay.
No? You agree?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay.
So I'll include him on the emails for the schedule and make him a packet as well?
Yeah. Dave did talk to him, and he is free next Thursday, so. Dave got ahold of me last, you know, asked me last night, and he's already, you know, checked and into it and whatnot, he just needed our blessing, so.
And what time is that?
I'm going to say 5:30 is the first one, but I'll email you.
5:30 is the first one?
Yeah.
And there's going to be four of them?
Yes. The last one's at 7:00.
And three are from town and one's from outside?
I wasn't going to, yeah.
All right. All right, Old Salt and Sand Building, I'm glad both of you guys are here.
So we got the email that, I think I included a copy of it for all of you. The Maine Municipal, if you look at the, you know, if you look at, down at the bottom, it says Nicole, the board, this one to Maine Municipal, "The board has discussed the demolition of the Old Salt Shed. Unfortunately, the new, until the new fiscal year begins July 1st, there's currently not enough money in the budget. Can you tell them if there's any time constraints that she should share?" So that was really your question last week. So, "Michelle, I'm assuming from your statement below that there will be funds available for this come July, as long as the building is not being used and is barricaded so employees and public know not to go in it, we can remain and keep it on liability. But I would want some expected demolition date for 2016. We would not be willing to stay for a long period of time. Is there an expected date?" That's the underwriter of MMA.
All right, so we're going to get on it as soon as we can in July, and we'll let them...
Are we going, before we proceed too much further, that we probably ought to, you know, get some bids out on the demolition for the dumpsters themselves, and that way they have a better idea of what they're getting per ton.
How many outfits around do that?
Oh, there's a bunch of them, you know, your Blow Brothers, Simpson, Waste Management...
Oceanside.
Wouldn't it be smarter for us to go with the contractor we have that's given us such a good deal on the transfer station? Or is this something different?
It's a little different, because he's giving you a, he's giving you a price, I mean, I can't speak for the transfer station, but he's giving you a price on solid, you know, different waste, you know, altogether, everything is different. This is just for demolition itself, so demolition costs less usually than it does, you know, regular waste, I would think, so.
We have a demolition dumpster at the transfer station.
Yeah, but isn't it all one rate? I don't know. So that's, that's it. That's the question, is I don't know what the rate is, so.
Well, we talked to Bob, but are you saying that you want us to put out for taking the building down too, or just to haul the trash off?
No, just for the, just for the material haul off, you know, because when they drop dumpsters off, and they usually charge, you know, I know what I pay, you know, plus dumpster fee, that's all we really need at this point, I think, is just to, you know, get the demolition tonnage cost and haul fee.
All right.
The only thing, it's just we don't really have the money in our budgets, we didn't really, this was kind of thrown at us after the budget season, so it's all going to, where's that money going to come from?
Thrown at us too. They told us we had the building for the rest of the year, and then we figured we talked to them about what we're going to do next, but, you know, we've just built $500,000 building, you'd think they'd give us a couple of weeks, you know?
All right. Well, I mean, what I, what I proposed last couple of weeks, we've talked about it, is, you know, the building maintenance account has $15,380-some dollars in it. There's going to be a $1,200 cost and hook up the power, a little blue shed, we're still having a power out in the blue shed yet. We've been waiting for the fiscal year for that, and Michelle, I like to get with her and get an idea of what the power bill's going to cost us for the rest of the season, and after that, I believe there'll be quite a chunk of money there for, for the disposal of that. Most of the cost that I see is going to be the, obviously eighty percent of the cost is going to be the haul and off demo fee.
Because, I mean, the dumpsters usually average, on demo jobs, they usually average about eight hundred bucks a dumpster.
And we're going to need quite a few for that, right?
Quite a few.
Yeah. We don't have to separate like shingles and stuff, right?
Nope.
You just dump it all in?
You know, I mean, we might be able, you know, to separate some of the wooden stuff and, but, you know, like the fellow I deal with there, if you're hauling just straight wood, you know, the cost is less, but that gets kind of, you know, kind of hard to do there on a project like this here, but, but I did, I did ask Mr. Simpson to come up and give me an idea of what it would cost, you know, for the, you know, tonnage-wise, and he's supposed to come up, take a look at it, and he's pretty much the only guy around there that does demo and hauls it off, you know, he takes it there in his yard, the local guy that does it. Now, the other guy's pretty much just supply dumpsters themselves, and you just take it out and put it in, so he's usually a good reference, you know, of costs, so we have at least a ballpark idea of what, where we're going with it. So I have asked him to do that, so.
And can you ask Bob to check with our guy too, to see how much it would cost to have dumpsters to go down there and haul that off?
I mean, sure, the people I got to do it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
People that are at the dump now. All right, so we'll get some numbers and we'll figure out where we're going from there.
Yeah, I mean, worst-case scenario, the numbers come in a lot higher than I figure they will, then we'll have to sit down and figure out something else, you know, but at this point in time, I, it's getting too close to budget time to just start slapping numbers together. I know you guys are already tight on your numbers now as it is, so I really like to get some real information before we start slapping numbers together.
Yeah, well, this is not something they're going to let us go on any longer, so we may have to look at one of our projects that we were going to take money out of an designated fund and put the money from the designated fund in to do it.
That's why I like to get some numbers put together before we get too crazy, but we do have money in the, in the building maintenance to at least start the project.
Okay, now, there's still gravel in there?
There's sand in there, yeah.
Sand?
It's about six, seven hundred yards.
So we got to move that, so you don't have money to move that either, do you?
Right now, we do not have the money for that, but after the fiscal year, we will, so.
After the fiscal year?
Yeah.
There's not money left in winter plowing that you could use to move that before the end of the fiscal year? Isn't that part of winter plowing, salt and sand?
Well, typically...
Or is that a salt and sand budget is separate?
That's a salt and sand.
Okay.
We, we pay the loaders out of the salt and sand budget, because we put it in with the, the load is that comes out of there, and then we take it out with that, so typically that's what we do, but I mean, we do have, I don't know, it's going to be about $50,000-some dollars between our snow plowing.
Right, if you guys authorize us to take both of our loaders down there and work a day and clean that right out, so we're done with it.
We'll have to ask Michelle if it's okay to use that money?
I'll check. The board is okay with it, as long as they get an okay from Michelle?
Your load's still there, mine's still there, so.
Now, we get the, the stuff out of there, we put the barricades back up, nobody has to go back in there until we can get the building taken down, because that's what they're asking now, is make sure nobody's going in there.
So it's the winter maintenance account, Scott, is what he said?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Plowing and sanding.
Plowing and sanding, okay.
When you load your trucks, you would use your plowing and sanding money, but when you put it in the building, you use your salt and sand money? You use salt and sand money both times?
Salt and sand to load them in and out, you know.
To put the sand in and load out.
Right.
Comes all over the...
But this money, oh, wait a minute now, does this money roll over? I forget, did we change this? Does this snowplow money roll over?
All our snowplow money.
Okay, so we probably don't want to spend it then if it's rolling over.
Well, no, I mean, the, the snow plowing, the snow, the snow plowing, all of them roll...
The snowplowing doesn't roll over.
Yeah, snowplowing rolls over, everything rolls over, the only account that doesn't roll over is our building maintenance. And that, that account will, there's a $600 bill coming in from our electrician that finally called and said he's sending it. We've been waiting for it, and so by the time the power bill and that gets sent in, that, that budget will be pretty much depleted, so, but the plowing and sanding, plowing and sanding account, that rolls over, and the, the only one doesn't...
Winter maintenance reserve, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a, yeah, it wasn't on there last year, but it's probably, should be back on.
We didn't have anything, we had to go for extra money.
It was on there three years ago, because I, we rolled over, Scott and I rolled over a bunch of money three or four years ago.
So this is the first time it's going back on?
Well, yeah, for three years, we had too much snow, so we had to go and get extra money, never mind rolling anything over.
Yeah.
All right, if, we can talk to Michelle?
Do you have an idea, I mean, you said you both have loaders down there, I mean, we're talking about just an eight-hour, 10-hour day between the two of you?
It'd be no more than that.
Should be able to both get it done?
Yeah.
I'll check with them and call you both tomorrow.
Great. And then barricade it up until we can get there back in July or whatever?
I got some culverts across there right now, I got, I stuck them there because I didn't have the, I had to remove the barricades that were there to put the building up. So the barricades for that was sitting behind them, so we just never, one of them was, I put the culverts in front for now, but I will be removing those culverts there, because we're going to be starting a project up there on the Wilson Lake, doing the dam there in the next couple of weeks, and we got to stop pouring concrete on those, for the head walls, so I will be moving those culverts, so while I'm down there doing that, I'll, I'll put the barricades across. And we probably ought to get some signs, no trespassing, you know, order some signs up, so.
Yeah, so get the sand out first and then close it up. We want to close it up and then go back in again.
Well, I'm going to close it up. I mean, I'm just going to put the barricades there, it only takes us a minute to pull them away.
Yeah.
But I'm going to have to pull the, pull the culverts out of the way of it right now. It was a temporary blockage, so.
As far as our building maintenance too, we probably ought to think about getting our gatework back up, you know, out of that budget before...
What happened to that?
We had to take it down for the...
For the construction?
When we wind out the entrance there, we had to take that down, so.
So do you have to build, do you have to get a new gate that's longer?
Nope. I believe the, the entrance didn't, we wind out the dirt part of it, we didn't wind out the hot top part of it, so, so really, all we have to do is plunk it back on the ground, but we'll probably have to get a couple Jersey barriers and extend off from there or something. It was chain-linked fence, but that got all taken down.
Well, we could always move it back over and just put a chain across to tie them together in the middle.
Something like that, yeah. So, but I think right now, if we can probably wait off to July 1st before we can spend any money down there, but, but yeah, that's just, that's what I've been thinking right now, is the general, the building maintenance account right now, we've got a few things to spend out of it, other than that, you know, it's pretty much what it's for, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Meetings versus workshop, there's nobody here that's brought this up, so I'd like to table it until fire department or transfer station, somebody's here to talk about it, so if that's okay.
Okay. Do you want me to get Bob to plan coming in next week?
Well, he, his issue is more of an executive session anyway, so if he wants to come in next week, we can go into executive session and get his issue fixed.
Well, he's, he's all right with workshops.
Yeah.
But I think the, from, I think what he's saying though is from, based on what Ted believes he wants to discuss, it, it's not something that can be, it's a personnel matter.
We can't talk about workshops.
We can't talk about, right, and the employee, remember, has rights, so we've got to be careful.
Yeah, so he, so we'll go into an executive session next Tuesday if Bob can make it.
Okay. And just so, I mean, since we've already mentioned on television, so it's going to be, if it's a personnel issue, it's going to be a generic, it's not about one particular person that we have to invite, correct?
Right, right, it's about policy. Okay. All right, the shed, Willie's liquor application.
I got you guys the call list that you asked for, and I emailed it to you. You said you wanted to take a look at that before scheduling a public hearing?
Yeah, I didn't see any concerns.
It's fine.
You have any concerns about the police report?
Oh, no, no, there was nothing on it that was bad.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we look at the calendar, today's the 3rd, how about the 17th? Would that be okay?
Okay.
So you want to do 6:00, where it's the liquor I usually do?
Okay, to the public, to the selectmen's meeting and then the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll notify them.
All righty.
So we're not going to sign it that night, then?
Uh, we can if we, if there's not a lot of complaints about it, but...
Uh, meeting starts at 5:00, though.
Right, so we have to either do one...
I think for, for Iron Tales, didn't we have the first?
Well, you, yeah, but you tabled, you generally table it, well, it depends, I mean...
Table it for a week.
You had asked for...
Well, we had issues with the, with the fire inspection and whatnot, so.
All right, you had asked to, I mean, we can move up to 5:00 if that's what you want, your selectmen's meeting can be right after that in case you decide to sign it, but remind me, you wanted a copy of the sprinkler, did you want something from Willie's?
Actually, yes, we need to have a copy of his, same thing we asked for for Iron Tales.
His inspection?
Yeah.
An inspection of the sprinkler system?
Inspection of the sprinkler system, current inspection.
We, we had something, it came in...
That was from...
Iron Tales.
Iron Tales, we didn't get one from Willie's yet.
Oh, that was Iron Tales?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go back, so did you decide you want to do...
6:00 is fine.
6:00, and then we'll, it'll just be tabled for the following week?
Yep.
And probably should let Dave know to go take a look and see if he has any concerns too, because he said he wanted to be involved in this from now on.
Yep.
All right. New business, warrant draft.
So I certainly don't expect you to read through them all, I was just hoping that we could kind of point out a couple of them, and maybe take them home and just, we can put it back on the agenda next week for you to kind of talk about if you have some concerns. Most of them are housekeeping, but, so articles 1 through 5, 1 through 5 are going to be your secret ballot, just so that you guys know in case there's any questions. In regards to the Romack Orchard purchase, we did check with Maine Municipal to determine if the treasurer's statement had to be on the ballot, or if it just could be posted in the polls in an effort to save space, but it can't, it's going to actually be on there. So that entire indebtedness and the cost, maturity of the loan, all of that's going to be right on the ballot for the voter to see, so those are those questions.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay.
It says, "Said purchase is contingent upon fundraising efforts of the Three Rivers Land Trust to contribute an additional $75,000 prior to June 30th, 2017." So if this passes and Three Rivers doesn't have the other $75,000 by June 30th, that means that we don't raise money through taxes to pay the loan, correct?
That's how I took it, I mean, that's, is that what the board understands?
Yeah, I think that's how we, how we figured it, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
You gave them, June of 17, you gave them a full year, so...
Oh, that's 2017.
Right, well, they're...
Oh, so we do have to raise taxes for sure.
Well, you're allocating, well, you're allocating just one loan payment, and that's why you decided...
Right, we have to raise taxes for that first loan payment even if we don't end up buying it later on. Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
So you're good on that one?
Yep.
The next few, 7 is just, it's the death of me, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 are just the articles that we need to figure out who's going to be on what committee, and 7 and 8 is just, it's interesting, because if 7 passes, we choose all those members, but if it doesn't pass, we have to be prepared for 8, yeah, or vice versa, so.
Yeah.
We'll have lots and lots of little voting...
I think it's going to pass, because both committees, you know, people on both committees want this, so.
Right, no, and it probably will, but as a clerk stands, if I don't prepare them the other way, it won't pass, and that makes my luck.
You'll have to vote, yeah, you have to vote for everybody.
All right, so 12 and 13 are per the board, see, 12 takes out 4.226A, and then 13 takes out 4.226B.
Okay.
The next ones, we really don't need to go through, these are all standard, I just really appreciate you reading through them, checking them for proofing and whatnot. 15 through 21 are all standard from taxes to interest rate, the tax-acquired property, nothing new there. And, same thing, right up through 24, those are all standard, 25 is your snowmobile, emergency disaster, okay, so 27 is one that we definitely want you to look at and spend some time on. This is the one to see if the town wants to join the public employees retirement system.
Mm-hmm.
And, so just take a look at that and save questions for Michelle, but according to how she's read it, they have to include all of the names in there, who's exempt and not, so.
The names of the employees?
Yeah. Say where.
That's, yeah, that's public information, they do that with all the teachers.
Well, no, but, right, in the warrant article?
Oh, no.
Yeah, that's where...
But Maine Retirement is saying we have to put it in the warrant article?
That's, that's how she has it listed, so, let me clarify with her, but see where she's got, include all names, include names, or wait a minute, we're, we're maybe, no, we're excluding, the following is a list of classes and current employees who are excluded from Maine PERS participation, so she's going to have to list everybody that's excluded.
Okay.
It's going to be a long list. So anyways, so take a look at that one. 28 actually, so 27 allows them to join, 28 allocates the money, 29, those are your numbers for all the different departments.
Okay, I have a question before we go on past the retirement. I know that a question has been brought up about signing a contract that goes beyond one town meeting, and we've done it many, many times with, you know, contracts for reevaluation, loans for buildings, loans for fire trucks, so I don't see any reason for that. Do we need to look that up with the state? Because the state's given us the wording for the article, but I know somebody on Warren and Finance was concerned that we're, because once we sign this, we have to stay on it forever.
Right, so you want to be prepared to see something in writing saying that you have the right to, to vote on something that's going to postdate?
That's going to, the town's going to continue to be responsible for beyond that, that one town meeting, and we don't have to bring it up. The same thing with the sheriff's contract.
Yeah.
Right, we approve the contract, we kind of have to pay him, if you approve this, you're going to kind of have to pay. gonna kinda have to pay him.
Yeah, and the contract was for four years, so I mean, we didn't have to go back each town meeting, so this is gonna go on forever, or we have to come up with a better plan than the state in order to get off of it, so I just wanna make sure that we don't have to go back and do this every year.
Okay. So really, we're holding them contingent on, okay. Okay, I'll ask her, I'm sure there's something in that packet.
Okay.
Um, so 29 is good, those are your original numbers, um, next few, you've got the, uh, contract deputy, remember that this is on there again, Article 31 is gonna be on there, um, for another four years.
Do we know that that's gonna be the number in January?
That is gonna be the number, yes, we've already gotten the budget from the, um, county.
Okay, cause we're already paid through January-
Correct.
-of 2017, right?
Right.
Okay.
This is their 17, 18 number.
Right.
Um-
And Shapley has already voted to go ahead with this.
Shapley approved it, yes.
Okay.
Article 32, I, uh, just, what we believe is, was the final agreement on the board was that we are, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to hire a full-time fire chief and negotiate the salary not to exceed 65,000. And then you can see in parentheses that that doesn't allocate the money, it just asks the question, do you wanna do that?
Right.
And then 33 is the same, that's fire department's number, uh, forty, 34 and 35, um, 34 is the roof. Sorry, I'm finding a typo as we go along, um.
I thought we, somebody said that that was way high for that, but this is coming out of the undesignated fund, right?
Yeah, the roof, that was the figure that we got, we actually got a quote from Hall Brothers.
Oh.
They're the same ones that did this building. I mean, we'll go out to bid when the time comes, but similar to the demo, we needed something to go by.
Okay, but that's for doing the whole roof, not just the back half?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that right? No, is, is that right?
I believe so, yeah.
Um, not moving anything forward with capital improvement for the fire department this year, sand and stockpile number, um, that's ratifying the overdraft.
Okay.
So remember, that has to be on there.
Yep.
And then you've got the road commissioner wages, turn over to the next, mm, sorry, next page, you've got the district, um, projects, one and two, looks like the numbers are identical, and road accounts on the bottom. Transfer station, um, 43 was, um, one that you guys, we made a change on, see if the town will vote to appropriate up to the 12-4 from the rec, capital improvement funds, that's what you wanted, right?
Right. And nobody stepped up to take that over?
Uh, not yet, but, you know, and I did have a conversation with a couple of them, I mean, we need to, as a town department, we really need to get better at and, and finding a way to advertise that, you know, we can, um, you know, we need to get some slides out there, maybe after the election, we'll-
They're not, they're not still a nonprofit, they're a town department?
They've always been a town department.
Oh, I didn't realize that. They started out as nonprofit to, to get the field built, right?
Right.
And then they became a town department?
Maybe we can put it on the sign out there, Ed, after the, uh, election is over. Um, so everything else pretty much down, conservation, county tax, planning and development, cemeteries, um, we've got the donation line. Social services, uh, nothing else should be new to you guys, uh, dams, public access, the front entryway, remember that's an estimate as well, uh, 52, you've got the siding and the fire exit stairs, again, from undesigned funds. So, and then a list of, um, accounts rolling over, it looks like it gets bigger and bigger every year, um, she added the two, the district one and two winter maintenance, and in the building maintenance, we're bringing back to roll over. Um, and then the ones Ted, we wanted to talk about was, 55 and 56, so this is, so for the most part, other than errors that you guys find or corrections, things you wanna discuss next week, I think the warrant is in pretty good shape. Um, I still need to verify all those elections in the beginning, but I'll have that done by next week, um, but 55 and 56, so 55 is the school article, I think that one's done with, right?
That's done, they're asking for 65,000 from their undesigned fund to, um, hire a foreign language teacher, so that's all set, and Warren and Finance can vote on that at any time. 56, they were holding back the amount because they don't know what it is, but if you remember last year when they made all these special budget funds for, uh, tuition accounts and for building maintenance and things like that in case they had emergencies, they took it out of the undesigned fund, and they told the town at that time they would no longer hold an undesigned fund beyond a certain amount of money. What they wanna do is put everything forward beyond that amount that they, they told the town that they were gonna keep.
Do we know what that amount is?
I don't, I don't remember what it was. Um, so they won't have that number until June 30th, so what I'm suggesting is, um, the school board meets on Tuesday night, I talked to Kim today, have them rewrite the article to read, um, not in an amount like 100,000 or 200,000, but to forward all funds towards taxes beyond their limit of 250,000 or 200,000, whatever it is they're allowed to keep in their undesigned fund. So anything that's left over on Ju, June 30th, we'll go forward towards paying taxes, because this is gonna be an ongoing thing from now on since this happened last year, um, so that would be a normal article that will be in, cause I know the Warren and Finance says that they don't wanna sign the warrant until they get the whole warrant, so hopefully we can get the school board to straighten that out on Tuesday, then the warrant will be complete.
So, okay, so basically, once we determine what that, what that number is, we're gonna reword the article to basically say any amount above and beyond-
Yeah.
-the undesigned fund balance of as of June 30th, whatever.
Right, so if they come out with 100,000, or they come out with 200,000, whatever it is, they're gonna put it forward towards taxes without having to go back to another problem.
And that's not something that the Warren and Finance or the townspeople are gonna have an issue with, cause the money is offsetting taxes, so.
They're giving, they're giving us money that they didn't spend, and we get to not tax people because of it, so.
Right, a good generic way of wording it. Are you guys okay with that?
That's fine.
So we'll get you a draft, and, um, Warren and Finance, I think, is meeting on May 9th, if I recall?
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
Okay, and school boards meet on Tuesday, so they'll get that straightened out Tuesday.
But it's your hope that the Warren and Finance will start going through the articles, I can touch base with the chair?
Yeah, if you could just start voting on all the other ones, there's no reason to hold those up, and we'll have that final one on Tuesday night. Um, I, I talked to Kim today, we'll have Michelle talk to Kim tomorrow, and then I'll go to the school board meeting on Tuesday night and make sure that we get it through on Tuesday. Then the warrant will be complete, and you guys can finish your work, cause you're not gonna be able to do the whole warrant Monday night anyways.
We're prepared to get started on this.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
All right, and then, um, the last article is just for the municipal revenues, that's the offset one. All right, so, gonna take it home and just take a look at it, make sure you have any changes, and, um, we'll see what happens Monday at Warren and Finance, and start tying it down.
When are we going to sign?
Um, well, I mean, anytime, once we get the-
The Warren and Finance recommendations?
Well, you guys can make your recommendations anytime, I mean, nothing that says yours have to be on before theirs or after theirs, you know, so we could start making recommendations, um, anytime, maybe we could do half next week and half the following week, cause you have to technically read them and make the motion.
Okay.
Um, we just need that last warrant article too, so.
Uh, but we don't make a recommendation on that, the school does, right?
That's the selectmen's warrant, you've-
Yeah, but the school makes a recommendation on their articles. They got board of selectmen, it shouldn't be, um, school board, cause they, they come from the budget, and they're making the suggestions. Cause you asked me today if they had already voted on those, and I don't think they have, so we need them to vote Tuesday night too.
Okay.
Do you have to send somebody down to record that, or can they use one of their people?
No, not for school, we can, it's a school, they can just give us-
Use their person?
Just Warren, well, Warren and Finance, I guess, so you guys are, Dr. Williams, may I ask, are you certain you'll be voting on Monday?
Sure, we're gonna go down and have a-
Okay, so.
Gotta have a secretary?
Yeah. We'll work it out, go ahead.
All right. Okay, you got anything else on the warrant?
No, sir.
All right, uh, other business, thank you card, Jennifer Selectman, Deputy Shaw, and Dave Winchell, uh, thank you so much for the efforts you put forth towards answering our speed limit, our, thank you. Obtaining our speed limit signs on Young Grids Road, they are a welcome sight, regards, Joanne Perks. Um, I guess Joanne almost got hit by a car while she was in the flower garden by the sign at the, uh, veterinary clinic one day, and called us up and said, how come there's no speed limit signs on that street? So that started our, what, year and a half?
And just to kinda, to piggyback on that, although that card came in the mail, and as you guys know, we're doing our new workshops, this is when the board sees things for the first time, um, I wanna take the time to tell you that we have gotten, I have gotten numerous calls, um, not just about David, so certainly wanna take a minute to thank Scott as well. H Road has been a big one, other than one individual that wasn't sure, he felt like we moved it from his driveway to another spot, um, and he wasn't upset about it, he just didn't understand it, but they, I mean, they really have been very thankful that those signs went up in, in both areas all over town, so.
So it's all positive?
It's very positive, um-
That's great, that's great.
Yep, we'll see how positive when we get our radar-
All positive, we're gonna wait.
When we get our radar trailer up, we'll see how that goes, but, yeah, no, I'm sure there's some unhappy people, but the people that call me are so far happy. He is gonna be very busy.
I think he's gonna like it, though. All right, uh, public comment, anybody have anything from the public?
May I ask a question, just, um, kinda directed to Dr. Williams, do you mind? The board can kind of address this all at once. Um, so, remind me, let's talk about the, the fire chief position and where I think it left off, and tell me if I'm going in the right direction. So, once the board decided that they were gonna put the article forward to ask the townspeople, um, if they wanted to hire the fire chief, I think we kinda had the conversation that since we know it's not gonna start until July 1, but anytime in mid-May, you know, we wanna start advertising that position, just like many of the things we do, we're gonna say it's contingent on, you know, the passing of the article, but the idea is to have somebody ready to go July 1, and it's gonna take a process. I mean, by the time we advertise again, we get the committee back together, um, is that your understanding, that that's how we're gonna do it? There's no reason to wait until July 1?
It's going this far, I went down, seriously, I don't expect to have a public rejection of the, of that particular, uh, article.
More the reason not to wait, I mean, you guys, we could be accepting applications at this point, we could be, you know, thinking about hiring, or interviewing.
One thing we do need to at least consider, and that is, in case we get additional applicants, which I would hope that we'd be able to look at, we may have to have a contingency, uh, starting July 1 of reconstituting the committee, because the committee automatically disbands as of 30 June, according to the-
Oh, just, we just gotta reappoint you.
Reappoint us.
We don't have to go to the town meeting.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah, we just, we do that as, as soon as the town-
As long as that's-
July 1st, we reappoint everybody, so that'll be done automatically.
There should be no problem. And I would like very much to go ahead and, and draft a letter as we did before, this time being able to put in, uh, a figure, which I think now is pretty much, uh, uh, an surety, I hope, and, uh, proceed with, we may get some other applicants in addition to the one that we have looked at.
So I, I guess the, the question to the board is, I mean, we, based on the way it kinda went, short of the salary, we're okay with the posting before, as far as the job posting, the way that we put it out there, um, remember our application is a little different now, it's got the information in there about the, the, the background check and the, so we've, we've covered a couple of issues.
Background check and the, and the physical, uh, check that we can-
So is there anything from the prior process that you think we might wanna change?
Did we put in about, um, criminal, if you have any criminal-
Yes, that's a new application.
Yes, yes.
Turn on the application.
But as far as the requirements and what we were looking for, I think that all stays the same.
Requirement should be unchanged, and we put in about the agility test, and in fact, we gave a little addendum sheet-
So, um-
-when we sent that out.
You and I can get together and work on putting that back out, so we can go ahead and put a deadline of, you know-
Fine, I would like that very much, and the, committee did a good job, and then looking forward to finishing this up.
Good, okay.
That's great.
Figure we might as well get it started.
Do we wanna look at our benefits package again, just to maybe tweak the vacation side of things? That was one of the bone of contention with several people.
Well, that was a bone of contention, and I understand, uh, the difficulties that, at this end, but when you get a, a mid-range manager who has had a long experience in, in firefighting, et cetera, and we only offer him or her one week vacation, there's something that doesn't really cling well in my ear about that. It's not going to affect the budget at all for this person, basically, and perhaps the whole idea of, uh, of looking at how we do vacations maybe, uh, in line, I don't know, but to offer someone just one week, I don't think I've ever been in a position myself in which they've offered me only one week, and I think that's unreasonable, uh, and so I would hope that that could be done, perhaps not necessarily through the, through the system here, but simply with your decision-making of, uh, making an arrangement for this particular person, since everybody else who is full-time already has passed the old standard and is getting two plus weeks of vacation per year.
Right, but we have to treat all the employees as municipal employees the same, so we can't have a different policy for just one person because it's a higher level job, you'll still have to go through the same process everybody else does.
Then perhaps, perhaps we should start talking about that.
Or we have to offer it to every employee.
Well-
Maybe we should offer it to every employee.
So do you want me to put the personnel policy as a discussion item for next week, and you guys can start looking at it?
Well, we don't have a place in the budget for it, to, to pay for it. You know, you're gonna have to, I'm sure we can find enough money in the fire department budget to pay the fire chief-
Right.
But how are you gonna pay you and Ken and Michelle and Bob and everybody else?
This is another week in the air.
Right, and-
And Ken's is probably one of them.
It's money that's not in the budget, is all I'm saying.
The money's already in the budget, cause they're, they're allocated for 52 weeks.
Well, no, I think what he, I think what he's saying is that, and Ken's probably one of the, one of the rare situations, because he doesn't have, his deputy, he only allocates his deputy for the amount of vacation that he has coming to him, so if you increase the amount of vacation, you are gonna have to increase that deputy line.
Right, but, but, but what does he get a year in vacation?
Right now, he probably gets four or five weeks.
Yeah, so he's already covered, so.
Well, no, I mean, so you're saying that those numbers aren't gonna go up?
Most likely not, because he gets-
You're gonna increase only at the bottom?
If, you would only increase the first year coming in.
That would be my assumption, was to go ahead and just-
Maybe just go to two weeks, is my thought.